I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, July 17th. If the clerk could, please call the roll.
Anderson, Baldwin, Dean, Gardner, Buncey, Stan, White.
And Councilmember White informed me that he wouldn't be able to make today's meeting or Monday's meeting because he has travel plans. So he, do we need a motion to excuse his absence?
Yeah, that doesn't hurt.
Okay, could I have a motion to excuse Councilmember White's absence today?
Madam Mayor, I move to excuse Councilmember White from today's council's workshop.
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. Any agenda changes, deletions for today? Any guest speakers? All right, public comment on agenda items only if anyone in the audience wishes to speak today. Anyone online wish to speak on agenda items only, please raise your hand if you wish to speak if you are online today. Okay, all right, we'll move on to item 6A under discussion items. The hardscaping installation request for Wick's Park Bar and Grill, it's page two of your packet. And Ryan, if you could update us on where we are with that.
Sure, Madam Mayor. So Christine Murphy of Wick's Park Bar and Grill has submitted a second request to install hardscaping between the sidewalk and curb outside of her business along Mary Street. This request is to, as you recall, the previous request related to concrete, this particular request relates to a request to install pavers, which would be used as a solid surface to place outdoor dining and picnic tables on as a condition of approval from the Planning Commission and to meet our ordinance requirements. So as you recall, there's a set of criteria that the council has to review in any hardscaping requests. So from the ordinance, I kind of placed that those eight criteria in your memo. The city engineer and Department of Public Works took a look at the requests from the city engineer's perspective. He's recommending that the pavers be on a crushed stone base level with the sidewalk slightly above, and that crushed stone for the joints is used between the pavers, similar width is what they are, or at least were currently, to allow for some infiltration. The Department of Public Works had similar comments, also noted that they would like to see five foot by five foot minimum cutouts for the trees. And then Mr. Herbert also noted some concerns with these locust trees and roots and kind of pushing things up over time. So he just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page that, you know, if, as the trees grow and, you know, the roots grow, that there's, you know, a possibility that the pavers could be impacted and causing the buckle and change and that there would need to be, you know, an understanding that that maintenance would be needed by the property owner and that that would be at their cost. So Ms. Murphy's business has submitted an updated site plan that would, that is consistent with the engineer and Department of Public Works comments. My only comment on the site plan is that there was an extra picnic table drawn on there. Only three picnic tables were approved by the Planning Commission and Historic District Commission, so only three would be allowed to go there. And as a reminder, you would need a separate revocable license agreement approved with that. So assuming the council is willing to allow us to go forward and wants to vote on this on Monday, we will have this teed up to approve the hardscaping and then we'll have a separate revocable license agreement for the additional, you know, three tables along Mary Street.
So both of those things will be on the agenda for Monday?
That's the plan unless you direct otherwise.
You mean the additional one picnic table? You said three, the additional three. There was three already approved or?
There was three that were approved by the Planning Commission, but she doesn't have a revocable license agreement to have the tables on Mary. So you did previously approve the tables on Water Street.
I understand. Thank you.
So we can action both of these pieces on Monday?
Correct.
And on Monday, then, once we approve or disapprove, that will give the applicant direction if they can go forward or not?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. Are all the fines paid?
They are.
Okay, good. Okay. And so Scott, this is, this is what was there. This is not crushed stone, right? So it's not going to be this again? Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that's my next question. So the city engineer and the superintendent have approved the site plan, the brick pavers that they want to use, the way that they're going to be installed, all of that, that's already been approved by the city engineer?
They would recommend approval with the conditions that they, that I touched on. Yep.
So I just want to say that, like, this is exactly what we were looking at. All anybody ever wanted was for the property owner to follow the rules. Nobody wanted the property owner to gravel. Nobody wanted the property owner to light up social media about how the city's hard to do work with. Everyone in the city wants to work with property owners and there's a lot of property out there that, or a lot of places out there that was clearly the city has worked with you on to, worked with the property owner on to allow tables and chairs out in the right of way. And, you know, it's good for business, it's good for the city and all that's appropriate. So it should be nice if we could understand that everybody has to follow the rules. The city's worked, jumped through hoops to approve this in a timely fashion. It could have been submitted months ago and I think that the city has gone above and beyond, staff has gone above and beyond to help out. And I don't think that the, what we've seen, what we've seen has been appropriate. And I'm glad that this should put this to rest, be done with it, vote on it Monday and call it good. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, good afternoon. I do want to say that the application is complete as far as I'm concerned. It was interesting because documentation demonstrates the fact that we've got, either it was by design to be eclectic in terms of hardscaping throughout the city, or there is, and not that this has anything to do with the application, but the pictures just bring up in my mind that that's something that hasn't really been looked at. I mean, the streetscapes are all over the board. It's not by design, not to say that would stand in the way of any approval here, but it was really high, it was really eye opening to me because I'd never really looked at everything quite the way with the application photo. So and of course Scott knows that by going all over the city is all different kinds of surfaces and so forth. So anyway, the reason I'm mentioning this is because I think it does bring into question forward thinking in terms of streetscape, which has been on our strategic plan for years. It's part of our, you know, track community plan. This is probably something we need to take a little closer look at in the future. So if you want that unanimity or if you want it to be eclectic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the thing, right?
That's the thing, people have different ideas on that, but yeah.
I tend to support Councilman Gardner's view that, you know, it's a hodgepodge right now. And, you know, I think, you know, as, you know, things like Scott mentioned with the roots and stuff, as these repairs need to be made, you know, I would like us to, as a team, consider, you know, maybe during strategic planning or maybe one of the committees, Parks and Public Works makes a lot of sense, to come up with sort of some standards, you know, that recognize some of the things I think we aspire to be as a community.
Yeah.
You know, beautiful small town charm, kind of an environmental awareness, you know, so things like we could control, you know, stormwater runoff, create a beautiful cityscape. You know, I'm quite impressed with what our neighbors have done across the river. I think that's quite, quite attractive. And I think there's a lot of support in the community over there for what they've done. And I think people have stepped up to actually participate in maintaining some of those flower beds. So I would be very much in support of maybe over the winter kind of working with the team and maybe, maybe it gets split off to us, you know, to a work group within Parks and Public Works to come up with something. So as we phase out, you know, some of the, just the pure concrete phase out some of the, you know, some of the things in the pictures, that might be, I think might really serve us well in the long haul.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, so this will be on Monday's agenda.
Good.
All right, moving on to item 6B, staff wage scale and paid holiday adjustments. It's on page 30 of your packet.
30.
Page 30. Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, so the city last kind of took a look at our wage scales back in April of 2020. The Michigan Municipal League did a kind of a comprehensive look at each position and the benefits that the city was offering and then provided a set of recommendations. And as you know, the, the employment world has changed a lot since that time. We went through COVID and we have a very competitive labor market right now. So we reached out to the Michigan Municipal League to say, hey, you know, we're looking for an update. We found out that the Michigan Municipal League doesn't do this kind of work anymore, but we received the recommendation, the city, previous city treasurer received the recommendation to reach out to Jeff Romberg, who's here today, and his firm Romberg Stover Associates, who has, well, I'll let him touch on the many years of experience they have, taking a look at wages for different organizations. But we set it up in a, in a way that Jeff was able to meet with, you know, at least all of our department heads for most of the positions and kind of talk about their job duties, you know, working in a small community is a lot of different hats that our staff have to wear. So we wanted to take that into account along with their, their job description. And then Mr. Romberg and his team kind of took a look at some Michigan Municipal League data and looked at some comps and municipalities that are nearby and some municipalities that are maybe similar to Sagatuck and other parts of the state. They come up with an updated wage scale, which is for you in your packet today. You know, my thought with this going forward is that, you know, we really need to have, and I discussed this with Mr. Romberg and some of his recommendations and that, you know, we really need to have a combination of, you know, counting for the fact that staff gain additional experience with, with time here and, and veteran themselves with trainings and that sort of thing. And so, and job experience frankly by, you know, being here for a period of time. So we need to account for that, but then we also need to account for cost of living adjustments. And my understanding is historically that maybe cost of living, maybe adjustments were made, but maybe not always the increases that were needed to account for along, you know, how long somebody's been here and their experience level and the additional knowledge that they're gaining. So I thought going forward is, you know, if the council concurs with our proposed salary steps here that, you know, each July would evaluate staff performance, deperformance evaluations and assuming they're, they're meeting expectations, they would get a step increase. And then at the end of each calendar year, we'll take a look at, you know, what inflation looked like and then we'll adjust the entire scale or inflation. So that way it stays up over time and stays competitive over time as an entire scale. And then the staff would also get the, the cost of living adjustment as well. So that way staff aren't just getting cost of living adjustments, we're accounting for both in there. As it relates to benefits, there were, you know, there were no recommended changes. I think we have a very competitive, competitive benefits package. But one thing that their, their reporting did show is that the average Michigan Municipal League reporter had 11.7 paid holidays. Currently, we're at 10. I looked at kind of our surrounding municipalities, the city of Village of Douglas is at 12. Sagatuck Township and Algon County offer 13 days. And so I kind of took a look at types of holidays or which holidays each of them are offering. Douglas and the township are both offering Martin Luther King Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. And then I believe it's the township and the county are also offering Veterans' Day. So I wanted to at least be competitive with, with other employers in the areas that related to paid holidays as well. So that's the recommendation before you. I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Romberg if it's okay, Madam Mayor, to kind of explain how they arrived at this scale, kind of how they, they view these things and go from there.
Yeah, please come up.
Good to be here. By, by way of background, I've been coming to this town for probably 50 years. Now I'm going to tell you my age, all right? My parents used to have a home. They're no longer around any longer. But anyway, up on Holland Street. So I'm a big fan of Sagatuck and I live now Lake Town Township. I'm originally one of those bad East Siders, right? So just a quick about, so who's Jeff Romberg and this is firm Romberg Stover, RSNA, whatever. So there's another person named Stover and she and I were partners at Plant Moran, which you've probably heard of before. She was a partner responsible for their HR consulting practice and I was the person herding cats as I was, looked over all of the consulting work that the firm did. Was there quite a long time. 20 years ago, the firm said, we don't want to be in that business anymore of doing this kind of work. Sarbanes Oxley came out and when Enron went, that's a long story. But technically, we couldn't do compensation work for clients that they audited if they were publicly traded. And that had a big fall off. And so it's like, maybe it's time to separate. So we literally bought the practice, you know, accountants, they wouldn't give it to you for free. And so we had to buy it and went on our own and took the team with us. And we've been together ever since for 20 years. We've always had a close relationship with the league. In fact, we built the league's pay system many years ago for them. And when they would get busy, they'd call and say, can you help us? And then about a year ago, Mandy Reed, who was the key person at the league, called and said, how would you like to take over all of our work? Because we just, I got too much to do and we as a league decided not to stay in that business. They'll still compile data, which is really important, but they're no longer doing these types of studies, at least for now. So I think that's what happened. You called the league and they said, call this character named Romberg, whoever he is. And here we are. So it's, yeah, it's great to be here. We, this is a pretty traditional project. Ryan kind of outlined it already. We did spend some time looking at data. We talked to staff. We talked to Jamie, talked to you, right, Brian, and a couple, and Peter, who's not here anymore, and a few others. And then we did compile data. We actually took the same sample that the league used in 2020 and it turns out to be about 2025 communities. And then we took your positions and matched them as best we could to their data and came up with this market analysis, if you will. And then we compared them to your salaries. And what we found out is, is actually good news, your pay is like right there in the middle of the market. And so if you looked at the median pay levels, the middle of the market, right, for all your positions, overall, you're like maybe 2% above, 1%, 2% above, not much more. So that, good for you. That means along the way, you've been making right decisions. Assuming that's the strategic position you want to be in, right? Do you want to play in the middle of the market or some organization say we need to be a little higher, you know, than maybe 5% higher, 10%. But our analysis says, here's what the middle of the market tells us. And we use that data to build that structure. So that structure is tied to the market median pay levels. And you can see there's eight pay grades. Jobs have been slotted in the grades based upon the market and some internal equity kind of positioning comparisons internally here at the city. We built a step system. The width of this range from the lowest step to the top step is quite comparable with what you'll see in other municipalities. And in fact, those that we actually just compiled the data for, I think this range is about 30% wide and the market was like 28. So we're like all right there. And this is pretty common to have 10 steps, 3% differentials is again, is to reward people as they grow and develop and for longevity to a point. Can't keep paying them forever, right? So at some point you get to the top step and that's okay. That means hopefully you're paying them well at that higher end of the, of the pay schedule. And as Brian also indicated, you should look at these numbers every year and update them based upon what's going on in the market. Salary ranges are going to keep moving, so yours need to keep moving. And so we can, we actually can help you every year with those numbers. So what's happening in the market, how much your salary ranges, municipalities going up in the state of Michigan, and we can tell you that. We have, we have access to that information. So it's, it's pretty straightforward, simple. Simple always works better. So don't complicate pay systems, keep them simple. They're far more effective easier for staff to understand what's going on, what's my next pay raise going to look like if I'm warrant that in terms of my performance and the city's ability to pay. I mean, they're not guaranteed. That's an important consideration. I mean, you have to, first of all, say we've got the money to provide the steps and they have performed at the appropriate level. So it's, it's not an automatic, but hopefully both of those conditions will normally exist, right? And the city has the funds and the staff are doing a great job. And by the way, I'm quite, I should have told you, I'm really impressed with the people I met, the team here, the staff. It's a good group. It's good. I guess I would have expected that though, since I have this built in bias to Sagatuck, no. Yeah, and as we talked about, the benefits are, look fine. Yeah, you probably could bump up your holidays. I mean, to be a little more competitive, but overall, they look good. And, and the other thing to keep in mind is, so this, there are eight grades here and that's really kind of your, your playground, if you will, for compensation. So as jobs, new jobs might get created, you figure out what grade to put them in, one of those eight. If one of these jobs takes on a lot of new responsibility, you know, it shouldn't be a two anymore. It really ought to be a level three. What's the market tell us now that this job has more responsibility? So it should be alive and not static and not, not forever looking just like that. Those numbers need to change and you may change positions or position placements in the grades. And then again, that's the tool and, and for you to work with. These grades, by the way, are 10% apart, from one level to the next. That's, we like that. We don't like it 5% apart, but it's too small because then you're going to have twice as many grades and you have twice the challenge of what grade we put jobs in. So, so again, this is, and you'll see some old government models where they would have had smaller differentials, but that's, that's certainly not the trend of what we'd recommend. So it's, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, you have some interest, not, no two jobs are alike. So we shouldn't say that an Oval Beach manager, you know, we didn't find an Oval Beach manager in any community. And I know you didn't, the league didn't either. So, you know, we looked at some kind of parks and rec kind of roles and superintendents and those sorts of things to try to get some comparable, but, but every city is a little different and particularly smaller communities, you wear a lot of hats. Jamie told me about all the hats she wears, right? So it's true. And so that's, you do the best you can. And, and I think that, you know, the key is where do we recruit from or where could we lose people to? And so we better know what somewhat similar jobs are in those communities look like in terms of pay, which is exactly what this process was all about. I'd be happy to, oh, I was going to mention, I didn't, we've, we do a lot of work on this side of the state and even, and not, not just because we now live here, but, but the city of Zeeland's been our client for a long time. We built their pay system, city of Holland, the Holland Board of Public Works has their own system. In fact, every three years, we go in and update all that for them. So we've got some good near, near term, nearby, I should say, experience. I'd be happy to ask and respond. Any questions, comments, reactions?
Yeah, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I, I don't. I was happy to vote on it last week. I, we have a city manager who expected to do the appropriate due diligence and I see that he's done the work and I was comfortable with it last time. I appreciate you coming here and speaking to us, but I certainly don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Go ahead, Gregory.
I appreciate the time. I really do. We had such a big agenda and I was able to read through this, but I didn't sit down with the calculator to find out, like you said, that was 10%. I was like, yep, I wanted to make sure that. And, and then, you know, just to take the time and also to have you here to explain the process of coming up with those numbers. I appreciate the time.
I just, oh, go ahead.
No, you go.
A question I have is more philosophical of whether we want to be in the middle or if we want to be slightly above. And I tend to think we want to be a little above the middle because we're, we're not an average, you know, we don't want that. I mean, I think we want to be above average. And, you know, there's so many things that lead to people wanting to come here and then stay here and build their careers here. And a lot of it, I think we've made, I mean, I think we're in a really good spot. We've got a strong leader in our city manager. I think people have good relationships at work. All those drive engagement, opportunities to feel like they're heard and, you know, anecdotally, it sounds like that's, that's the case and grow, have the tools they need to do their job. But importantly too, our pay and benefits. So I definitely think I'm a huge supporter of adding the holidays, but also would encourage us to think about whether we want to be a little bit above average, just in recognition that we expect our, our team to be above average. And, you know, so I throw that out as a question for us to, you know, think about.
Madam Mayor? I, I actually do agree with her. And, and, but again, under the discretion, I mean, there's a framework within, within which to work. Our city manager has a discretion to make that. And so I'd certainly trust him to do that. And bringing up the holidays, again, this is just, I would maybe suggest a float day for Indigenous Peoples' Day because that's the second Monday of October and what we have a city managed, we have a city council meeting. I don't, something to hang out there as a possibility. And then if people feel more flexible, if they've got a floater, that's something I would just recommend since we are active.
Just, just to build on what the mayor pro tem said, yeah, this is good. And I'm generally supportive of what Councilmember Anderson is saying is, you know, being a little bit on the more competitive side, just given the continued competition out there. I mean, we lost our deputy DPW director to the private sector, you know, that's much, that's very much on my mind. So I do think Holly has a good idea there. On the holidays, yeah, you know, MLK Day, that's consistent with the state and the county. Veterans' Day, November 11th, also consistent with the state and the county. You know, the Indigenous Peoples' Day, you know, I'm okay with that. You know, it's in October. I mean, state and county do Juneteenth, but that's on Wednesday and that's right in the heart of our busy summer season. So I can see your logic going with an October date, you know, particularly if it floats in some way. So yeah, I'm, I'm ready to vote, vote for this on Monday.
Yeah, I think the structure is, is fine as it is. You know, it gives them the flexibility, like we were saying, you know, if somebody is worth a three or a four or something like that. Because I'm looking at this now and it looks like several, you know, if we look at where people were to start, you know, when they started their job, you know, I can tell, well, this person started at a three when we hired her or a four. So, so I can see that, you know, depending on, you know, the, you know, the competition and the, and the knowledge and the skills that that person has. So, and, and so I like the flexibility of that. Love the holidays. I've been saying for, I don't know how long, why are we still open on Martin Luther Day? I understand the need for Indigenous Peoples' Day. That is an important meeting for us. But I'm on board with voting as it is, but, but I'm, I'm flexible. You guys know I am about that holiday.
Okay.
I like, I like how it gives us and gives you some freedom within the frame to, you know, to be competitive. You know, like, you know, if, if you or Scott see, you know, a talented individual that you might get a chance to recruit and you've got the budget to recruit somebody and attract them away because of their skill set, you know, I want to compete for the best as a city. So I'm, if you feel this gives you the freedom within the, the framework, working with the council. Okay.
Yeah, it does. Yeah. I mean, good, good points. You know, it's not that we have to start everybody at one. You know, we're taking a look at their prior experience, where they would probably fall had they been here for a certain period of time. And folks may start in an old scale or more, you know, towards the top of the scale if they're great talent and, and we really want to attract them. I, you know, so, you know, I certainly won't disagree if, if you want to be more competitive on the wage side and be a little bit above, above market. I think the other factor that I'm, you know, considering with that is that, you know, and I get that sometimes employees don't always, they just look at the salary, but we offer, I think, I think above average. And I guess Jeff can tell me if I'm wrong, you know, benefits package in the sense that, you know, we have a hybrid pension plan here. So, you know, you stay here six years, you're getting one and a half percent multiplier times the number of years that you're here, plus 6% towards your defined contribution, plus the cities will end to match 4% to a separate 457. So we're putting 10% into retirement plus a pension on top of that. Plus, if you've been here for five years, we'll put an additional 2% into your defined contribution if you put in an additional two. 10 years, it's even more. At 15 years, it's even more. And that's really good, I think, on the retirement side. Where right now, our, our health insurance benefits, we're paying for it, you know, the premiums paid for entirely by, by the city. A lot of municipalities have gone to paying at least a port, or having employees pay a portion of the, the health insurance premiums. And I just got the numbers the other day, our health insurance costs are going to be going up almost 11% for next year. So, so I'm trying to, you know, kind of weigh those things out too. But again, I'm not going to, you know, disagree if, if you give these more, you know, you know, a larger wage scale to work with staff on, I, you know, can respect that. That, that just going to, would, would come with some, you know, and then probably some budget adjustments. But, you know, I think there's some room there.
Not, and to add to that, I, and I've heard it from folks, even our police force, you know, that works in our neighborhood here. We've got great leadership too. It's a great environment to work, you know, and I have friends that work in bigger cities, Detroit and Chicago and those DPWs and many municipalities. And, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying they don't work hard, but we do offer a great work environment here.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. I appreciate all the comments that are being made. I, I have the same thought about where we position ourselves and working for a large organization. That's always something that's being discussed. Okay, are we competitive? Can we attract the right candidates? More importantly, can we retain the right people? And that's really, you know, that's more of a philosophical and it's a financial decision too, in terms of what you can actually support. So I appreciate having that conversation. I will say on the PTO, we should just align ourselves with the state paid holidays. Just call it a day. Just keep consistent with that because if you think about the talent pool that we look at, there are probably people that are looking at positions of other municipalities or the state perhaps. And if we're aligned as much as we can be, that would, I think, put us in a better position to do. No, someone would say, well, it's aligned with the state. That totally makes sense. And it looks like Douglas and the township are. So I would just suggest we just align with the state paid holidays and as they change, we change. The, the other thing that this, this, this is the basis. I'm so glad we did this. This is something that I've been really interested to see us do for a number of years. And Fred, thank you for the work. It's a very much respect the work that's been put into this. We really need to start, and I've talked with Ryan a little bit about this, is that we really need to sort of putting together a program that allows us to recruit and retain the employees that we have and the best employees that are out there. Because as a small town, you know, it's a beautiful place to work. It's a wonderful place to come. It's an expensive place to live. And in order to attract the people that we'd want to have work here, we need to be competitive. in order to attract the people that we'd want to have work here, we need to be competitive. And this is the first leg in the stool, I think. And then it's the environment we work in, it's the performance evaluation process. It's everything else that goes, which you touched on, you know, and the fact that we've got a publishable grade of positions as well as the steps. That's something you can share with candidates and say, okay, this is exactly what you have to work with. And then the manager can explain, here's how you get there. Here's how we get you to that point. Also, too, is if, if I'm a current employee, and let's say I'm, let's say I'm Scott, and Scott says, hey, I'd like to think about becoming the city manager, for instance, which is not on here. But how do I get there? You know, or if I'm the, you know, deputy clerk and administrative assistant, how do I get up to the clerk's position? You know, what are the things I have to do education wise? Not to say that Jamie's going anywhere. I'm just using examples here. Is that, is the type of environment I like to see the city develop? Because then that keeps employees engaged, keeps them moving forward professionally, as well as that there's room for growth. And again, we're somewhat limited because we're not huge. But that is the, this forms the basis for all of that. The other thing, too, Fred, I don't know, maybe this has been.
That's okay.
I let it go once.
Yeah. Appreciate the correction. I'd be very interested to hear some of the results of the job description reviews and staff interviews as well. Because, and that doesn't have to be shared today, but I'd be curious to see what the staff said, because they know their jobs as well as anybody. I'd be very curious to hear what they had to tell us about what they think are the areas that, whatever they came up with, I think that would be important for us to hear at some point. And, and so.
Go back. I've got all our notes.
Yeah. Some kind of summary of that would be helpful.
A lot of it was focused on, so tell me about your position. What do you do? Better understand that, given, as we talked earlier, you know, no two communities are exactly alike how they organize tasks and responsibilities. And we obviously ask them their views about pay. So how do you feel about your compensation? Just give them a chance to talk. And so I can, could, could, yeah, we can organize something easily.
That'd be great. And Chad, the fact that staff was involved in this is just wonderful. I think that's, that's really indicative of the type of work that your firm does. And this is something I think we should just be on a regular cadence of getting this updated, like the cities that you other work, work, work with. It's just going to get more competitive. We have to be comparable to large and small communities who are going to be hiring from the same talent pool that we are.
And the private sector. I'm, I'm more concerned about the private sector being able to out, you know, out recruit us than.
And we, by the way, we didn't do that. But we can, maybe at a future point or whenever, we have private sector data.
Well, because, I mean, Jamie came from the private sector. Sarah came from the private sector. So.
We buy it. There are surveys that are done. We couldn't go to private sector employers and say, tell us what you pay, you know, your, your accountants or whatever, or your IT people. But that one, they wouldn't give it to you. But they all participate in surveys. And so if you ever want to look at private sector data, a key is, how do we match it up? So how do we take Jamie's job and find something like that in the private sectors? And sometimes those aren't, you can't do it. I mean, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a, it's not an easy match. But that data is available, just so you know. And, and it's, we have it, because we buy the surveys, our firm does all the time. It's tools of our trade, right? If we don't have paid data, we're not very helpful. So, and, and we do a lot of work in the for-profit market. So that's, it's, give that some thought if you want to.
All right. Anybody else? Any comments or questions?
Yeah. The only other question I had is in regards to the COLA. So my organization, we don't get a cost of living adjustment. We get a merit increase, which is based on performance measurements and so forth. We don't automatically get a COLA. So is that traditional for city? I, I.
It's, by the way, I, 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 I don't, I don't like the expression COLA. And I think it's, but it's been around forever. But here's what you really are trying to do. You're trying to keep those salary ranges competitive. So every year, you're adjusting the ranges because the markets move. That job has a new salary range in these communities that we just surveyed or has compiled data for. So we want to keep our ranges competitive. And typically, on an annual basis, oftentimes at the same time of year, but not necessarily, a deserved employee would get a step, and that value of the step would go up. The whole scale goes up. In fact, that's what you would do. That's what you should do every year is move that scale up if the markets move. And, and you can afford it, you know, move it up 3% or 2%, whatever the number is, whatever the market says is going on.
But keeping the merit increase separate from that.
And, yeah, well, you could do, I think that's what, what Ryan's suggesting, that we do, we separate them. One's done in July 1st, right? The, the step increase, the performance increase, merit, what do you want to call it? And then the across the board adjustment to the scale, which I know we think of as cost of living. Consultant compensation, people don't like that term. It isn't cost of living. It's how much is that job worth in the market? Let's keep moving our scales. So, but cost of living has historically been around a long time. It's been built into bargaining unit contracts forever. And so everybody thinks, but thinks about COLA. That's right. Weird people like me are in this compensation league. We don't like COLA. I don't care about the cost of living. I really don't care about the cost of the, of a basket of consumer goods and services. I care about how much the market's moving for our jobs. Because that's what we got to keep our eye on, right?
Good point.
We got to stay competitive. So.
That makes sense.
I'll get off my soapbox on cost of living.
The other thing that comes to mind, and, and something that my organization deals with constantly, is that for current employees, where are they on the, in this case, salary steps? Do we have people that are outside of those steps? Do we have people that are in the right step itself, based on the understanding of the work that they do and the interviews that you did? That would be something that I think with this, you'd want to stop for a moment and say, wait a minute, is, are people in the right step? The right grade, of course, based on the position, but more importantly, because there's compression issues and other things that can happen with.
And Ryan is tending to that, right? In terms of what's the appropriate step placement for the employees that are in grade three, whatever, or grade six.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just one, one last thing on the dates. Does staff currently have Presidents' Day off in February? That's, once again, I'm not going to micromanage this, but that's one to consider, because that's a state and county one on Monday, and it's also out of the summer thing. But then again, you know, if staff wants to take November 15th off, and at the end of the season, there's venison in the refrigerator downstairs, I'd be okay with that. It's a joke. It's a joke.
Yeah, I, I did look, you know, I, I used to be a state employee, and I, I looked at the state holiday list. And, but I also wanted to try to, you know, match this up with, you know, Douglas and the township, when are they closed? You know, because there's been a lot of occasions where we're open and they're closed and trying to kind of line up, you know, some of that, and also with the county. So, so that's kind of ultimately why, you know, I, I looked a lot at Juneteenth, but I, I felt like Indigenous Peoples' Day, you know, given, you know, our, our, our area and our neighborhood history, felt like that, that was the day to focus on. And it matched up again with Douglas and the township. So. Yeah, yeah. No, I, I hear you. Yeah. So.
I know I keep butting in here, but just one other thing I wanted to say. I'll get out of.
Yeah, yeah.
The comment about, it's so expensive to live here. I mean, I get that. That's a real challenge. I do work for the, for Traverse City, the city, Traverse City. And we did their pay system. And that's a huge problem there. I mean, housing costs in Traverse, maybe they're not as bad as Sagatuck, but they're high. And the people can't live there. And so it makes it harder to attract them in the first place to come, because they have to travel so far, you know, to get to work. And so I don't think there's many people in the city right now that, that work for the city, that live in the city, that is there.
None. One, nope.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this is the third time today, I've literally discussed the challenge with housing here and affordability. Literally three times today, I've had this discussion with separate folks, including a candidate who was, you know, in a second interview for planning and zoning, that it is like, I was looking at the housing prices out there and wow, you know, so.
My, my parents bought a home here. I told them they lived here for $50,000. 10 years later, they sold it for 200. It's on the market for 3 million. Now, they've done some changes to it. But, but it's, it's the same lot, it's only so big. And it's the newer White House at the top of the hill on Holland Street, on the riverside. And it's, but from 50 to 200 to 3 million. So, I mean, it's nuts. Crazy, isn't it? You guys all know that. I have to tell you.
It's not, yeah, it's not just city staff. I mean, you saw the note from Phil's now, one of our favorite restaurants, you know, they can't even be open during lunch Monday through Thursday.
Oh, really?
Because they don't have enough staff. You know, I mean, they, they'd love to be open, but, you know, it's crazy.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
Great to meet you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right. We will move on to public comments on anything you'd like to speak about. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak. All right. Anyone online wish to speak? If you could raise your hand. All right. You saw correspondence in your packet. We'll move on to council comments. So we can start with Gregory.
Music in the park tonight, 7 to 9 p.m. with Don Middlebrook and Watermelon by Milk on Realty. This event's brought to you by the CBB. And from what I heard, there's a pizza deal at Wick's Park, just Wick's Park Bar and Grill, right across the street, two medium pizzas for $24. And then also, they've got some drink specials, too. So between blowing bubbles, I know I'll be at Wick's Park Bar and Grill having a little refreshment.
No comment tonight.
Okay. Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Yeah, two comments. One is the correspondence to the council, which were both consistent in terms of the, the question. And I recall principal residence, essentially what they're talking about is, is principal residence exemptions would be part of that short-term rental resolution that was passed. So I was just, just asking, was that purposely left out? Or was it not included? And so I think that's the question, because there have been some mixed messages about that. And there's some other folks that have asked me the same question, too, is, and something probably to be brought back to the planning commission is, I really think it's important for us. I know there's a lot of public meetings, and there's a lot of reported meetings, and a lot of people give the message. But I think with a, with a significant decision like this, I think it's worth the effort of the city to spend the money to send a letter to each certificate holder to, you know, an FAQ. Here's what the city decided. Here's what it can mean for you based on your property. So they know how to ask questions, and they know where they can go to get information.
Okay, Holly?
Nothing for me.
All right. At this time, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Sure.